I want to call the meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, June 11th, 2024, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy and Alderwoman Shoshana Kelly will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Goveya.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Senate.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
Thirteen present, two absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President, thank you very much. First last night was the graduation ceremony for Nashua South, which I was able to attend, and tonight is North. Of course, the meeting is tonight, so I wasn't able to go, but the... everyone was really happy. It's a great ceremony. It just shows how much potential we have in our younger generations, and it's just always a pleasure to be able to go. I did want to mention a few other things, and congratulations to all the graduates, of course. I wanted to mention a few other things, Madam President. You and I met with the Housing Authority today to talk about the problem of Sandy Pond, which has risen to a level where the water is flooding the small parking lot in behind the Earl Manor and is actually approaching the building, causing a lot of problems. We have met with... well, Public Works has developed a plan. We had them via speakerphone. So what they have done is they've acquired some six-inch tubing, and they are going to begin next week pumping the water out of the pond and directing it into a catch basin, which is some distance away, but one that empties into the river. DES, the State Environmental Agency, has approved this procedure. They want to talk to the neighbors because the driveways of a few people will be blocked during the daytime. They think they can do the work in a few days because it pumps 300 gallons per minute, and they will begin, they hope... and they're planning to begin either next Monday or Tuesday. So hopefully, we will see an improvement at Sandy Pond in the near future. And of course, that is exit six, so... I mean, excuse me, ward six, so we hope to improve the situation for people at Earl Manor. One thing... some questions on another matter, Madam President. Some questions have come up regarding the fourth item under communications requiring final approval. And this is the money paid for by TIF funds for the design of a new bridge. Now, this was reviewed and approved by the Finance Committee, but I'm not sure it's clear to everyone what exactly this is. So the city has an easement for pedestrians and for fire equipment on the driveway that is behind Clock Tower and is parallel to the river. Of course, it is used for just people walking, but also, this is how the fire department would gain access to Clock Tower were there a fire. It's similar to streets we have in the city. Oftentimes, the city, depending on the street, all of this goes back many years, decades, and even centuries, but sometimes, oftentimes, the city does not actually own the street, but instead, it's owned by a private party, but the city has an easement, meaning it has the right... we have the right, the public has a right to pave a street, to have traffic, even though the city doesn't technically own the property, they own an easement. This is similar to what exists behind Clock Tower. We have an easement, we can use it for these purposes. They cannot... the Clock Tower cannot obstruct the use of it. The problem is that there is a wooden section of that walkway, and the reason for the wooden section is that... and that needs to be repaired if fire trucks are going to be able to drive over it. The reason for the wooden section is that while the mills were still operating, the water ran down between Clock Tower and the bank and the bank of mills just across the parking lot. That was all open, and that was the canal, and the water ran through there and was used to power the mills. Then that water exited through a big pipe that comes under Clock Tower and enters the river where this bridge is. So over that former sluice way, or pipe, or exit, or whatever you want to call it, there is a wooden structure. Otherwise, it would just be open to the water and open to the former... to the opening where the water used to exit. It is not strong enough to support a fire truck, and the fire department is very concerned for that reason. Now, as things are, they can use Water Street to gain access to the roadway or the pathway that the city has an easement on, up to the bridge, but using Water Street, and that's most of the length of the building, or if necessary, they can come in from the other direction by the Picker Building up to the bridge. But they don't want to go over the bridge because they're afraid that the weight of the truck will cause the bridge to fail, and they'll have a big disaster. Now, as part of the Riverfront Project, the Water Street access to the city's easement will be blocked. So from now on, once the Water Street improvements are completed, the fire department will be coming in from the Picker Building or the west end of Clock Tower and will need to use this bridge. So the fourth item on the agenda is the money required to design a new structure to cross that opening that is strong enough for fire trucks to go over it. Ultimately, there will be some kind of cost sharing proposed with Clock Tower. They've agreed to pay some of the money for the actual construction of this new bridge, but that still is in negotiation. If this bridge were not improved, the project couldn't really not go forward, and were it delayed, the extra cost of trying to... if there were delay, if the work had to stop, it would cost a lot more than the cost of this bridge to... in terms of the increase in everything that you see going on there now. Anyway, that is the explanation. I can answer any questions if you have them. Hopefully, that was clear enough. Finally, I see in the audience we have a group of volunteers who are going to be serving on various boards and commissions. They went before the Personnel Committee on last week, I think a week ago yesterday, and I want to thank them and everybody else who serves on our various boards and commissions because without you and without the help of many volunteers, the city really could not operate effectively at all. So I just wanted to give them a thank you, and that is all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Response to the remarks of the mayor. Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank the mayor and Alderman Wilshire for the work on Sandy Pond. It's not my district or my ward, but as you know, the last couple of years, I've been a opponent of that building, that I just think to put our... let our seniors live there, and to me, it's not up to par. And thank you for the mayor having visited them a couple of times. We had Eversource come, which I work for, and we, you know, at least raked up the park, and then all of a sudden, you know, we have this new problem with the water. So... and I know it's been worked on, and Matt Sullivan and others have... Deb Chisholm, we've tried to figure out ways that we could do something about that water because it just... it's a hard problem to solve, so I know you guys have taken a long time to do that because of that. And I thank you, and I know the citizens there will be happy to be able to walk out back again and have that area cleaned up, but thank you.
Alderman Cle.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I want to add to what my colleague just said. Thanks to all of those that had to... that worked on this. I personally did go down, and I don't know if any other Aldermen have gone down, but the water was so high, even the ramp that they had that went to, it was completely underwater, and there was a lot of trash and so on that was just kind of there. Again, it's not my ward either, but I do have a constituent whose family member lives there and asked me to go down and look at it. So it was quite disturbing when you drove alongside the building and there's the water. It was... yeah, I took lots of pictures of it. I couldn't believe it, so thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, and I just wanted to thank the mayor for the explanation of the bridge. My Clock Tower, my very first apartment was right above that bridge, so I bet many of the Clock Tower residents will appreciate having it replaced. It's very loud, it sounds like thunder as people go over it because it's wood, so that will be nice to have.
Okay. Recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meeting of May 14th, 2024, the accepted placed on file and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Lisa Fodo, Director of Public Works, regarding referrals from Board of Aldermen R-24-026.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have one person signed up, Lori Ordolano.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I'm here to address the proposal to move the $500,000 into Risk Management to address legal fees, and I wanted to speak to the board for a few minutes about policy and procedure and the importance of policy and policymaking when it comes to the Board of Aldermen. I think that the Board of Aldermen could be really instrumental in assisting in a lot of these right-to-know issues if you had come on board and had worked on putting together a policy committee with citizens to address the deficiencies and what's going on in our right-to-know area. I addressed with the board probably a year ago the fact that Hudson did this and Milford did this. They had citizens take them to court, their citizens lost, so their towns did well, but despite the fact that the towns won, they recognized deficiencies in how they were addressing citizen requests and policy deficiencies. So their Board of Selectments formed committees with two or three members, and it was unanimously supported to get together with two or three citizens and outline a policy plan on right-to-knows, and they, within six or eight months, had it done. I've asked this board to look into that, and it has not been welcomed. You know, Judge Temple, last year, 14 months ago, wrote, "The undersigned," meaning him and Judge Colburn, "have both asked the city about the process for making a right-to-know request for city records in other cases involving these parties. To date, even us judges have not received a clear answer. The court therefore strongly encourages the city to develop a uniform policy outlining the process for making a right-to-know request for city records and make the policy publicly available on the website. Developing this type of uniform policy would eliminate one of the consistent issues the court sees in the right-to-know litigation involving these parties." And nothing was done over 14 months. And when I say nothing, I mean nothing as far as written policy.
One minute.
I just finished deposing the mayor and the legal office. The mayor, when asked about policy, said he really didn't think written policy was the most important thing. Attorney Leonard, in the last right-to-know hearing when I asked her trial, how employees are supposed to function, don't you think it's beneficial if they have written policy? She said she really didn't think so. And Attorney Bolton, when asked about policy and if it's on the website and did you update and do what the judge wanted, his answer was, "We abide by the law," and nobody would answer. You know, I really blame a lot of this shift of money on the Board of Aldermen. You don't need your legal office to tell you to get together and make a policy. Other municipalities did it without their legal office, and I know that I have very little time to address this. I'll take this up at the budget hearing where there's more time, but I really think it's way overdue, and it's created a lot of issues. Thank you.
Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award to Central Square.
Alderman Goveya.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept place on file and award a five-year contract for services and subscriptions with Central Square in the amount not to exceed $1,900,349.40. First year includes implementation, $312,763.80, which includes $174,058 subscription cost in year one, then each year thereafter for an additional four years. Total of five-year contract, specified onsite training is included in the initial cost. Funding will be through Department 150, Police Department Fund 81100, capital improvements slash 55620 subscriptions.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award, Pictometry International Corp.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to accept place on file and approve a two-year revised contract for the spring 2024 imagery flyover and associated services with Pictometry International Corporation, DBA Eagleview, in the amount of $36,498, $18,249 per year. Funding will be through Department 134 GIS Fund 53500, aerial imagery services.
You've heard that motion? Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award, Business Electronics, Inc.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to accept place on file and approve purchase of the audio recording equipment and maintenance from Business Electronics Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $40,000. First year maintenance, $20,760. Maintenance agreement, $4,186 yearly for years two through five. Funding will be through Department 152 Fire Rescue Fund 54414. Hardware maintenance.
You've heard the motion? Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding tax increment finance development program, Hoyle Tanner &amp; Associates.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to accept place on file and approve a contract for the design and permitting of the bridge replacement between Clock Tower Place and the Nashua River with Hoyle, Tanner &amp; Associates in the amount of $66,356. Funding will be through Department 183 Economic Development Fund 53107, Architect and Engineering Services slash Riverfront TIF Fund.
You've heard the motion? Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding tax increment finance development program, Concentric Fabrication.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to accept place on file and approve a contract for the fabrication and installation services for the Riverfront Pavilion roof at the Renaissance Park with Concentric Fabrication in the amount of $333,050. Funding will be through Department 183 Economic Development Fund 54210, Construction Services slash Riverfront TIF Fund.
You've heard the motion? Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding tax increment finance development program, Green International Affiliates, Inc.
Alderman Goveya.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept place on file and approve a contract for lighting, design, and construction support along Water Street between Factory Street and Main Street, including on slash under the Water Street Bridge with Green International Affiliates Incorporated in the amount of $38,940. Funding will be through Department 183 Economic Development Fund 53107, Architect and Engineering Services slash Riverfront TIF Fund.
That was mouthful. You've heard the motion? Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award, OpenGov.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to accept place on file and approve a three-year software maintenance agreement with OpenGov Incorporated in the amount of $348,084.47. Funding will be through Department 160 Admin Engineering, 168 Solid Waste, and 169 Wastewater Fund, 71228 Computer Software.
You've heard the motion? Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Daniel Healy, City Clerk, regarding issuance of warrant to Chief of Police for unlicensed dogs.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept place on file and commit the warrant to the Chief of Police to issue the civil forfeiture.
You've heard the motion? Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Petitions.
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
None.
Reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 6th, 2024 Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 13th, 2024 Ad Hoc Capital Debt Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
Animal and Dog Park Advisory Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the new appointment of Alyssa Omara, 2 Brew Street, Unit 2 Nashua, to the Animal and Dog Park Advisory Committee with a term to expire May 14th, 2027. Is Alyssa with us this evening? Alyssa will be sworn in at later date.
Nashua Arts Commission.
There being no objection, I will confirm the new appointment of Eleanor Luna, 26 Sergeant Ave, Nashua, to the Nashua Arts Commission with a term to expire May 14th, 2027. Is Eleanor with us this evening? She will be sworn in at a later date.
Business and Industrial Development Authority.
There being no objection, I will confirm the new appointment of Derek D. Gagnon, 172 Marsh Road, Pelham, to the Business and Industrial Development Authority with a term to expire May 28th, 2027. Is Mr. Gagnon with us this evening? Mr. Gagnon will be sworn in at a later date.
Greeley Park Advisory Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the new appointment of Alyssa Galapo, 131 Colgate Road, Nashua, to the Greeley Park Advisory Committee with a term to expire May 14th, 2027. Is Ms. Galapo here? Come forward and take the oath of office. Corporation Counsel will give you the oath of office.
Raise your right hand, please. You can smile for the camera. Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Greeley Park Advisory Committee according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Tax Increment Financing Advisory Board.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the reappointment of Angelina Spillio, 6 North Pepper Road, Hollis, to the Tax Increment Financing Advisory Board with a term to expire September 30th, 2025. I do not see Angelina here. She will be sworn in at a later date.
Zoning Board.
There being no objection, I will confirm the new appointment of Joseph Patry, 233 Cannon Gate, 3 Road, Nashua, to the Zoning Board with a term to expire May 28th, 2027. Is Joseph here this evening? Please come forward for the oath of office.
Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire? So help you God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cultural Connections Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the new appointment of Moheeda Bornum of 22 Killian Drive, Nashua, to the Cultural Connections Committee with a term to expire May 28th, 2027. Is Moheeda here with us this evening? Come forward, please, for the oath of office.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Cultural Connections Committee according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Mine Falls Advisory Committee.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the new appointment of David Silva, 400 Sherburne Road, Pelham, with a term to expire June 3rd, 2027, and reappointment of Greg Andruskevich of 3 Caraway Lane, Nashua, with a term to expire June 30th, 2026, to the Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee. Are Greg or... I'm sorry, David here.
Yes.
Please come forward.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will discharge and perform faithfully and impartially all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Mine Falls Advisory Committee according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire?
I do, absolutely.
Thank you.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointments of Cameron Green, 82A Amherst Street, Nashua, with a term to expire May 31st, 2027, and Adam Varley, 3 Scotia Way, Nashua, with a term to expire May 31st, 2027, to the Planning Board. Please come forward for the oath of office.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Nashua Planning Board according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire? So help you God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second reading of R-24-026, authorizing a second amendment to the site lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, successor by merger to AT&amp;T Wireless PCS LLC, regarding communications tower located at 67 Amherst Street.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to amend R-24-026 by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy of amendment 183. I motion to amend R-24-026 by replacing it with the golden rod copy of amendments recommended by the Finance Committee. And if I may just speak very briefly.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you. The amendment is just changing the rental from thirty-six hundred dollars to three thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars with an increase of three percent per year after that. And it previously was two percent. So the two percent changed from three percent. And I just want to make note that a Board of Public Works also recommended this as well.
Motion is to amend. Further, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. A motion for final passage of R-24-026 as amended.
Motion is for final passage as amended. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Second reading of R-24-052 relative to the supplemental appropriation of five hundred thousand of assigned fund balance into Department 128 Risk Management Account 89650 transferred to Property and Casualty Self-Insurance Fund.
Alderman Dow.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-24052 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Since these funds will be used to pay for lawsuits, and I'm a party to one of the lawsuits, I'm going to abstain from the vote. And I just want to add to, at the last budget hearing last year, a member of the public made a statement that the city was paying legal fees for my company in a lawsuit brought by a member of the public. Just want to say that is unquote not true, very false. Not a dime has the city paid for any legal fees for my company. Thank you.
Further discussion? Does Clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Present.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Abstained, sorry.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshere.
Yes.
Twelve yeas, zero nays, one abstention.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2452 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-055 relative to the transfer of thirty-one thousand from Department 161 Street Department Account 51300 overtime to Department 177 Parks and Recreation Account 54280 Building Grounds Maintenance, eleven thousand, and Account 71623 Park Equipment, twenty thousand.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-24055.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 2455 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
None.
Business unfinished at the previous meeting.
R-24-033, proposing an amendment to the city charter relative to adding two additional members to the Board of Health.
I don't think we're ready to take that up this evening.
Uh-uh.
Is that true until we hear back from the state?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
R-24-035, changing the purpose of up to two million, two hundred thousand dollars of unexpended bond proceeds from the design and construction of a Division of Public Works office facility to the design of a Public Works Division garage.
Now, this has been tabled. Do we have any new information on why this was tabled, that we should take it up this I'm guessing we're going to leave it on the table. Okay. New business resolutions.
First reading of R-24-061, authorizing the city of Nashua to enter into contracts with the South Egan Valley Transportation Collaborative, National Community College, Riviera University, Town of Hudson, and Town of Merrimack for transit services.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Senate, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dow, Alderwoman Kelly, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of R-24-062, changing the purpose of up to two hundred seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars of unexpended bond proceeds from the Franklin Street School Building Improvements Project to the School Building Safety Improvement Project.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Senate, Alderman Tebow. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Education, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, June 24, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. New business ordinances.
First reading of O-24-020, authorizing a stop sign on Diantonio Drive at its intersection with Buck Meadow Road.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Cle. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure. Period for general public comment. Tonight, we have three people signed up. Nicholas Scolera.
Hello again, Board. My name is Nick Scolera, Two Paddington Place here in Nashua, and I'm here to compel you, as a board, once again to draft and pass a resolution calling for an immediate and lasting ceasefire in Gaza. I'm beginning to run out of words to describe the horrors that we are seeing on a near-daily basis, horrors caused by our collective inaction. I struggle because that is all we really can do, say words. Words compel you to action. But if words were the only thing that were needed, Palestinians would have been free ages ago. If rhetorical acumen or flowery prose were all that was necessary to get feckless leaders in ivory towers to act, then those with better skills than I would have Nobel Peace Prizes by now. You see, words can only do so much, and they can only get so far, as is more than evident here, seeing as you all have debated more about parking spaces than a ceasefire resolution that brings multiple people to your meetings every other week. Just as our words do not affect you, your lip service or lack thereof does not work on us. Alderman Dow, my father and I both live in your ward. We have come and spoken on this topic half a dozen times at this point. And after this public comment session, for those half a dozen times, you have either not spoken at all or spoken to something that is not what your constituents are asking of you. We are tired, tired of all of your inaction. What do you expect us to do? How representative is our government if you are able to sit here for weeks on end and listen to us and not even bring about a motion to debate the topic? You want to have a discussion? You want to learn more? Then actually do something about it and show that you give a damn. As my father pointed out last meeting, and as I have repeated in the past, I've been to Palestine. I've had dozens of conversations with Palestinians in Palestine. You have people here in Nashua that were born and raised in Palestine. Why is it our job to educate you and fix your ignorance? Be adults, take accountability. You have resources at every possible avenue, and you have all decided to remain silent, feign outrage at people protesting, all in all being no different than our national government that we, as Granite staters, love to critique at getting nothing done. By being silent, you all have given rise to more than a few people, including Democrats, that outwardly promote themselves as getting you elected Mayor Donchess, from being vitriolic, anti-Arab, and Islamophobic racists. I wear a kaffiyah every meeting, as do many here. The kaffiyah has been a symbol of Palestinian liberation for generations. It is not religious in any way, but it has not stopped people, again, people who claim to be crucial to your reelection campaign, Mr. Mayor, from calling it a headscarf. That they have claimed that I, a white man born here in New Hampshire, must have either changed my faith or thought I was a Palestinian. Those are direct quotes. This woman called the kaffiyah a checkerboard tablecloth. I'm left here wondering if you stand by these comments, Mr. Mayor. This woman definitely positions herself as a citizen defender of yours on multiple public platforms. Do you want to distance yourself from this obviously racist rhetoric, or will you let this go? If I was a far-right extremist, I doubt you would even have to consider whether or not you wanted this connected to you in any way. I can't blame the people who live here in Nashua and work at some of the corporations that we've discussed here in the past, BAE, Raytheon, or Elbit, but I can certainly blame their corporations. And what do we do as a city? We bring BAE on as a key sponsor of Nashville pride. As a proud bisexual man here in Nashua, I do not want a war profiteer used as a financial backer for my queer liberation. I doubt we would be okay with Marlboro or Smith &amp; Wesson being our sponsors. If you think a fifteen-hundred-dollar sponsorship is going to work, it won't.
David Scolera.
My name is David Scolera, Two Paddington Place, here to speak to a couple of things. The one I'll speak to first, one you'll probably listen to, because there's financial liability for the city on this. I want to bring your attention to a meeting that took place at the Board of Education Finance and Operations Committee on January 18, 2024, about six months ago. There was a statement, a presentation by Sean Smith regarding Stello Stadium field upgrades and repairs. For background, I've been a parent, a coach, and a donor for football in the city of Nashua. I was also a football director and vice president of Nashville Palforce. So I've seen a lot of football at Stello Stadium. In 2011, that field was replaced for turf, with turf, for the first time. They said they'd have about twelve or thirteen years for it. Sean Smith said on that date, "There's a test that Nashville Park and Rex pays to have done every year that measures the hardness of the surface. If you think of the turf, it's just a series of fibers that have made it look like grass. Over time, these fibers start to split and fail. When that happens, it just gets harder and harder and harder." That's called the G-Max test, and it shows we have problem areas on the field. I saw a statistic recently where ten percent of concussions on the field come from the impact of a helmet on the ground. We obviously want to reduce that, and then he talks about the quote that it takes to get fixed. That was voted three-nothing to bring that to joint special. That was in January. I don't believe that's been done yet. If it has, it's not in the minutes. You need to do this right away. This field has surpassed its life. There's going to be football, soccer, lacrosse, et cetera, played on that field. It's beyond its use. That's lawsuits coming at you if you don't. I don't claim to say that every concussion can be avoided, but some of them can. And if you allow football and sports to be played in that field, the city faces massive liability. Get that field fixed ASAP, please. Now to something that's more important, but you'll take less seriously. This is regarding BAE sponsoring the Pride Parade. Don't do it. Take that fifteen-hundred dollars and give it back. I will personally make up for that fifteen-hundred dollars. Promise, I'll do it. I'll sign something today that says it. Do not allow a weapons manufacturer to sponsor a Pride Parade. It's something that you don't want to have done. There will be protests. I will help lead the protests. You do not want protests to be part of your Pride Parade. Allow these activists to be able to do their job that they've been looking to do without making you uncomfortable, because they will make you uncomfortable. They will protest at your Pride Parade. Thank you.
Remarks by members of the Board. I'm going to start over here today.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Sorry. Bradley Conway, my bad.
Bradley Conway, Manchester. Make it stop. We're back. We're burdened with even more heavy hearts after another harrowing weekend of racist massacre by the U.S. and Israel in Gaza. Israel's campaign of genocide is predicated on the idea that they are acting and preemptively eliminating threats in self-defense. But today, as if we needed more evidence that their intention is genocide, the official Israeli government Twitter account tweeted a graphic stating, "There are no innocent civilians in Gaza." Day after day, we look on in abject horror at how the logic of self-defense is clearly being used as cover to preemptively torture and eliminate all Palestinians. Prior to this weekend, the ratio of Palestinian death to Israeli death was already forty to one. Keeping with this outrageous ratio, and almost doubling it to almost seventy to one, this weekend, the U.S. and Israel massacred over two hundred and seventy-four Palestinian refugees by illegally disguising themselves as aid workers. And many media outlets are quick to frame this as a rescue mission for just four, only four Israelis. Alarmingly and unsurprisingly, we saw several of New Hampshire's federal representative delegation celebrate this racist calculus and thereby celebrate racism and racist murder in general. As leaders of the great state of New Hampshire, we need you to do everything in your power to reflect the diversity of your districts and stand up to the blatant racism coming from New Hampshire's federal leaders who continue to arm Israel and provide cover for genocide at every turn. I want to thank Alderman Tom again for drafting a resolution pertaining to how the people of Nashua want Biden and Congress to halt arms sales to Israel until it complies with international law. I personally think it would be a really exciting resolution. And yesterday, I read that the U.S.'s largest civil rights group, the NAACP, called on President Biden to halt arms transfers to Israel, so the city of Nashua would be in good company if it were to pass the Alderman's resolution. Please do so with urgency. However, the resolution doesn't go far enough. We want the city of Nashua to completely divest its monies from companies who are facilitating the genocide in Gaza. This includes BAE Systems, a company which should absolutely not be allowed to call Nashua home any longer. On a personal note, my parents met at Sanders on Canal Street in the 80s before it eventually became BAE Systems. After many years, my dad finally retired this year from BAE. I can tell you from personal experience that BAE fosters a culture of cruelty and racism and dehumanization towards Arab people, as well as non-white immigrants, and it has absolutely no place being celebrated as an industry partner here in Nashua. We're also aware that the city of Nashua's Pride event this weekend was sponsored by BAE Systems, and we want you to drop BAE as a sponsor immediately. BAE manufactured weapons and surveillance systems for Israel to continue mass occurring Palestinians. The sponsorship makes the city look really bad. Drop BAE from Pride and divest from genocide. Thank you.
Remarks by members of the Board. I'll start over here this time.
Thank you. A couple of things. So I know that I'll help Alderman Lopez. The Tree Street Block Party is Saturday at, I believe it's one o'clock. I know a lot of Aldermen have come before, and it's always just a great event to be out in the community, so hopefully everybody will come and attend that. Am I wrong on the date or time?
No, you're right.
Okay. We also have Pride coming up. I was able to take in DC Pride this weekend, which was fantastic, and it made me even more excited about our Pride, which is the 22nd, from 2:00 till 6:00. The parade is down Main Street, and then the festival is in the library parking lot, so hope to see you all there.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. To Alderman Kelly's, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Kelly's comments, yes, the Tree Street is worth going to this year. I'm not going to be able to, I'm not going to be able to make it, but I wanted to add to some of the things that are happening. The Nashville Historical Society is doing their World War II ribbon cutting, and we saw a presentation of that, of what they're doing and so on, and that's at 5:30 on Friday, the 14th, at the Nashville Historical Society. Also, on Saturday, they're having Letters to Nashua, which, again, is also part of their World War II event, and I really think everybody should try to attend that, and that's at 10:00 AM on Saturday. So the Historical Society, the museum, will be open on Saturday. Thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you. The Tree Streets Block Party is a great, great event. Unfortunately, I'll be coaching baseball on Saturday, but if I can make it, I will. So I just want to thank and congratulate all the graduates. You know, I've been lucky enough to have a lot of the kids that have graduated either be friends of some of my kids or been on my teams in the past, and so it's always great to see those kids graduate and move on to greater, greater things. You know, I mean, to threaten, to threaten disrupt the Pride event, I think, is not a good way to come in here. Threats are not the best way to get something done, in my opinion, but, you know, they have the right to say what they want, so that's okay. But one thing that came up, and I mentioned it in Budget last week, and I want to mention it to the bigger board. One of our employees here at City Hall, along with the mayor, had talked about not putting up a certain flag in front of City Hall, and because of it, this employee got roasted pretty good on Twitter by a Twitter handle of New Hampshire Libertarian Party, and it said she should be driven out of the city, spit on, kicked, and other, you know, violent type things. I think that just, it doesn't belong in the city, and the people that perpetrate that stuff. This flag has become just, you know, I'll quote Alderman Senate, so I'm not stealing from him, but a political football. And it causes people to do things like that. I hope this employee's okay. I hope that nothing's happened, and I hope nothing does. And I think it's a shame that a whole party, regardless of what their political views are, would come out and threaten any kind of violence or any kind of just nonsense for someone. I think that's wrong. It doesn't matter what you think or what you believe, you can share your You can share your opinions. It's okay. People can come here and share their opinions. They can share them on Twitter, they can share them everywhere. It's a free country. But threatening, I think that goes a little bit beyond just the saying you don't agree with something or you think it's wrong. So I just wanted to put that out there, and I think it was a horrible thing, but I just, thank you.
Alderman Senate.
Yeah, I wasn't going to talk about the flag, but since I was thrown into the political gridiron. Yeah, Alderman Tebow and I have talked about this a little bit, and it is really upsetting. I mean, I can understand why people feel passionate about the things that they want to accomplish and the changes that they'd like to see take place in our city or in our state and our country, but, and I try to lend an open ear to all of that, but when it comes to threats, and especially threats of violence, and whether you agree or disagree legally, spitting on somebody is a matter of simple assault, that's when you lose me. And so I hope that just collectively, we could all be better, whether you agree or disagree. On a happier note, congratulations to the graduates of North and South. You know, I know there's a lot of good kids graduating this year, there's great kids graduate every year, but I do find it a little upsetting, maybe a little offensive, that people that I went to high school with have seniors graduating this year. I don't know, it's just a little disrespectful, I think. But, but no, they're a great batch of kids, and, you know, just, you know, without throwing their names out there, you know, they're going to make great citizens of the world. You've got great athletes out there, future civic leaders for sure, budding chefs. I'm really excited to see what all of them are going to be doing next. And speaking of my high school years, I wanted to congratulate Tony Corones, who is the band director at Nashua South and was my band director many, many, many years ago. He was recently named the New Hampshire Band Directors Association Outstanding Band Director of the Year, which is, for anybody that knows Mr. Corones, I still feel weird calling him Tony, anybody that knows him or has had the privilege of being directed by him, that's a distinction well earned. He's a tough but really, really effective band director. I was only in the band with him for a very short while, and I learned a whole lot from him, so congratulations to him, and I hope he sticks around for many years to come. Thank you.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to quickly say thank you to my colleagues here for passing R-24055, which was the transfers of money in DPW. 11,000 of that goes to redoing the Oval outside of Nashua North. That will be very good, a project I've been working on now since I've gotten in here, so almost two and a half years. Nice to see it come to life. Happy to see we'll finally have a real solution, long-term solution for it. So thank you, everybody.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Just like to echo my colleagues in regards to the Tree Streets Block Party. It's a Saturday, 1 to 5. I believe I will be there with my family. It's a great event that Alderman Lopez puts on every year. Well, I should have started with, first and foremost, I should have started with happy ninth birthday to my oldest daughter, who will be turning nine this week. That time has flown very quickly, but I'm sure she's having a great time with her grandma tonight, who's babysitting while my wife works late. Also, you know, and I guess I'll do it, happy Father's Day this Sunday to everyone who's a father, and all the moms out there who have to be fathers. I just hope everyone enjoys the weekend. It sounds like we have a great weekend planned. Again, also, Pride Parade is coming. I will be marching in that parade as well with my kids. If it's not your thing, you don't have to go. You don't have to taste the rainbow if you don't want to. All right? Just, you know, let us be, I guess. So if protesters come, hey, it's not the first time my daughters have seen some protesters then at that Pride Parade. But I would suggest that $1,500 donation, if you can't give it to the Pride Committee, donate it to the Trevor Project. They probably need it more. All right? Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. Madam President, first, I would like to just basically say congratulations to all the graduates of Nashua North and to South, whether it be they're moving on to college careers or perhaps military service, but please, I hope this current group of graduates remember where they came from. We spent 12 years of education on these kids. I hope they come home, and I hope that we, as a Board, are smart enough to make a place for them when they come home. So therefore, I wish them the best of luck. I wonder how many future firemen we have. But anyways, congratulations. Also, congratulations to the preschool class at Mount Pleasant. My granddaughter was in that, so, you know, it's not a major degree, but it was big enough for her. And finally, I would like to apologize to this Board. I'm just really getting my feet back on the ground, but this is the transfer of money. When we built the Public Works Office Facility, we did it under budget. That's a pat on the head, you know, on the back, but we were under budget. And so the money was also thought of in the future of going to, you know, a parking-type garage facility to keep these trucks under, you know, shelter from the weather and stuff. So that was what we were talking about. Nobody was here to defend it. I apologize for that. So maybe the next meeting, we'll have somebody here. If you have questions, feel free to see me, Director Cummings, or Director Foto, and we'll be able to get your questions answered, and hopefully she'll be able to go through with that extra money. And I thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I'd like to also congratulate Tony Corones for Band Director of the Year. That's pretty good. Tony's a really good guy, really good band director, so congratulations to him. Congratulations to the graduates of North and South. I have a niece that graduated from South, summa cum laude, so very proud of you, Natalie Cooper. And happy Father's Day to all the fathers in the audience. Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I commemorated that Friday is the last day of school, so thank you to all the teachers. But it's also the last day that students will be in Elm, so I'll be picking up my daughter, and that'll be the end of Elm Street Middle School, so I thought that was worth going at a second bite of the apple. Thank you.
Committee announcements. Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. Tomorrow morning, 9:00, Room 208, Building Industrial Development Authority will be holding court tomorrow morning.
Alderman Moran.
We'll be canceling next week's PDC meeting. There's no legislation on the agenda and no discussion topic, so we'll see everyone on July 16.
Okay. Alderwoman Kelly.
The special personnel meeting that was noticed is canceled this week, and we will be taking up at our regularly scheduled July meeting, which is July 1st.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, as everyone should know, we're wrapping up the hearings on the budget. We, tomorrow evening, there's a Budget Committee for Emergency Management, Citywide Communications, Police and Fire. Unfortunately, I'll be out of town and won't be here, but I'm sure that that will go well. And then next Monday, we have the public hearing on the budget at Nashua High North at 7:00 PM, the 17th, and the full board should be there to listen to the public, any questions or concerns they have on the upcoming FY 2025 budget. Then the following evening, we will have, on the 18th, we'll have the last budget meeting with DPW, and also at that same night, we'll have the wrap-up. So I'm asking the Budget Committee members if they have any budget motions that they're wishing to make, please formulate them ahead of time, and if it has a severe impact on any division, please try to contact the Division Director and discuss it with them so we know the impact. And hopefully, we will wrap up the Budget Committee's budget on that night. If not, the following evening, we will meet again on the 19th to hopefully complete anything that's left. And then when we pass the budget, FY 25 budget by the Budget Committee, we will forward it to the full board, and that's where final action will be taken on it.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. But one thing, if I may, talk to the administrative assistant. Still getting my feet wet, you know. We got nothing with infrastructure coming up?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Can you make the announcement for me, please? Thank you. I'd rather do it this way, Madam President.
That's fine.
Infrastructure will be meeting on Wednesday, June 26.
June 26?
June 26.
You're all invited. Madam President, may I stand for a motion?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, my motion is to adjourn.
The motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 8:30 PM. Thank you, everyone.